At this time, I call the May ninth meeting of the county commission to order. We're honored to have with us tonight Reverend Mike Gutka, who is the pastor of the Lincoln Methodist Church right down on the corner. I think he's been here probably three or four weeks in his new pastorate at the Methodist Church, and we invited him to come and be with us tonight. Reverend, if you'd come to the podium, and you will give us our invocation, and Commissioner Clyde will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the flag.
My friends join me in prayer. Father, we give you thanks for tonight. So many decisions that have to be made. And we give you thanks for all of the elected officials, all of the citizens, all of the employees that have put themselves in the line of fire in order to make a difference in our world. In this county, I pray that the Holy Spirit will humble us all in this incredible duty that you have given us, that we will surrender our lives to you and keep you in mind in every decision that we make. We give you thanks, and we celebrate all decisions that are made tonight, even one of the ones that we disagree with, because we know that you're in the middle of them. In the powerful name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Our first allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Gutka, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If we can have a helping anyway, let us know. And I tell you, you have a one of the toughest jobs in Lincoln County, being the pastor of Stephen Dawkins. Okay, let's see if we can hear tonight. I'm not, it's not very well with me, but it's probably just me. I don't think it is. Okay, we have item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes?
What move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tankless, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair is done, all in favor of the motion, let be known as saying aye. All opposed, like side motions carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. I would like to, without objection, I would like to remove item number 11 on electric vehicle fire suppression from the agenda. Clerk will also in the record make, put the numerical numbers back like they are. I think in essence of time, we would take item seven, and I would like to move the solar farm ordinance and the tiny home ordinance up after item seven to become eight and nine, and then we'll go back down, and people might not want to have to stay here through the whole thing. If we don't have, probably, is any objection to that, then I ask the clerk to make those adjustments, and keep me straight on them too, because I'll probably mess them up. All in favor of the motion of the, is our motion that we approve the agenda with those remarks?
What move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known as saying aye. All opposed, like side motion carried, and the agenda is approved. Item number six is departmental reports. Six A is the office of emergency service director, Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, as always, it's an honor to be here.
Hold on just a minute, see if you can get that thing closer to you, something.
Test, one, two, test.
We just spent about $30,000 on this P A system.
I'm just glad it wasn't me one time. Check, test. There you go. Test, one, two. Can you hear me now, check?
I forgot to turn it on.
Mr. Collins, you've got to turn the P A system on. Excuse me.
Chairman and Commissioners, it's an honor to be here, as always, you have my submitted reports, and I will certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions on his monthly report? Okay, thank you. Item six B is recreation department director, Glaze.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners, you have my written report in front of you. Have any questions?
Any questions on his report? I see it in here, I'm glad, oh, y'all got council tonight, reading you here, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everything.
I've got a comment.
Commissioner Tankless.
I've had many comments, and people tell me that the fields and everything out there look better than the other house, and we appreciate what you're doing out there.
Thank you, and thank you all.
It's good to see all them young folks out there, I'm sure it is.
If you will, to give us a little update on the swimming area at the Eddy Fletcher Park.
Update on the swimming area, um, the moons, moon boat docking had to order more material to make sure everything is in place right, but they have it on the way, and everything is under control. So definitely by the weekend, oh, we should be up and running.
This weekend?
Everything else is in place, it just wasn't enough cable.
This weekend or next weekend?
Hopefully this weekend.
This weekend? That'd be good. Okay, any other question? All right, thank you, Director Glaze. Six C is the finance department director, Dawson.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have my printed reports, and if there's no questions, I will give you the cash balances.
Okay, any questions here? If not, proceed.
Cash balances for month ending April 2024, general fund, $3,780,231. The Sphlost Seven Fund, $1,722,518. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $1,107,333. The Transportation Sphlost Fund, $987,673. The Solid Waste Fund, $939,643. The Emergency Fund, $303,507. We have several other funds, but those are the balance of our major funds. Total of all funds is $9,766,426. Our Raymond James Investment Account, our 12-month CDs, $1,624,791. Our Raymond James Enhanced Savings Account, $518,065. The total of all of our investment accounts is $2,142,856. Our total cash and cash equivalents are $11,909,318 as of April 30th, 2024.
Any question, Director Dawson? And you do have your 911 call in here. Six D is Public Works. Come on up. Director Aika, she is, um, you got the Public Works, but she's six E with the community development. Do you have anything to say about Public Works?
Other than you have the reports, you have any questions?
Okay, we got the report. All right, now we're at the community development, if you would.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have my reports, you have any questions for me?
Any questions? If not, thank you. We have those reports, and they are accepted as given to us. Item seven, notice we got some guests here with us tonight, and they are invited, I guess, by Commissioner Clyde. Commissioner Clyde has requested that a proclamation be done for National Safe Voting Week. We have a proclamation, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner Clyde, for whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have about a third of the shoreline at Clark Hill Lake, so we're really interested in safe voting and all that. These folks donate a lot of time and effort into promoting that, and that's what they want to do tonight. And Larry Wiggins is a longtime friend of mine, been active in politics and government and helping the community for a long time. We've got Pat and Jim McNamara, am I saying it right?
McNamara.
I was close. If y'all, we'll come up and say a few comments about Safe Voting Week, and we've got the proclamation for you and all, and whatever you need from something, we're just glad to be part of subraying this and promoting safe voting.
Yes? So National Safe Voting Week is technically the 18th to the 25th of May, but we do this for the whole month of May, we make a focus on it, but it's not just the month of May. This is a year-round endeavor for us, it never stops. So my name is Commodore Pat McMenamin, I'm Coast Guard Auxiliary. We are part of District Seven, U.S. Coast Guard. I'm the immediate past Commodore for District Seven, which includes Georgia, Florida, South Carolina, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and all the water in between. So I work with over 5,000 auxiliars to maintain safe voting. We work hand in hand with the Coast Guard, we do everything the Coast Guard does except law enforcement. So we attend their training classes, so we are, you know, here to represent and to make sure people are safe on the water. Seventy-five percent of voting deaths are due to drought, and out of those, eighty-five percent of victims are not wearing a life jacket, and that's a huge problem. So that's one of the things that we do, is encourage the wearing of life jackets. We have our slogan is "Just Wear It." And Clark Hill is a huge lake, you know, and it's one of the most underutilized lakes, you know, they use a lot of it for fishing, and trying to talk fishermen into wearing life jackets is a whole different story. But we tell them, they can be out there doing that trolling mode, a wave comes along, hits them, they fall, bump their head, they're in the water, who's there to help? But, you know, we like to see them. So seventy-five percent of the accidents happen with people who've not had a safe voting class. And if you were born after January 1st, 1998, the state of Georgia requires you to have a safe voting class to be on the water. So we teach those courses, the N R teachers, those courses are readily available. One of the other things we do is we do vessel safety inspections. So it's not to try to catch people with something wrong, it's to make sure that their vessel is safe out on the water. So we all know that during COVID, if one of the things people could do was get a boat and get out on the water. Well, unfortunately, during that time, because of restrictions, you know, the number of classes went down, number of deaths went way up. So we've been playing catch-up now, trying to go back and get all those people who didn't have those classes, you know, and trying to get them to be safe on the water. So those are just some of the things that we do here, along with marine safety, we do safety patrols on the lake, on the river. We've worked with Lake Hartwell, there's another unit in Lake Hartwell, and then we're assigned to Secretary Trawston, is the Coast Guard secretary that we're assigned to. So we appreciate your support, and we just want everybody to be as safe as possible when they're out there voting on the water.
Thank you. If you will, Commissioner Clyde will present you with the proclamation.
Jim, hey, come on up. We sincerely appreciate your efforts of work, the time you put in to save one life, that's something very special, the time's always worth it, and we can save many more. Our commission is kind of long, so I'm going to get to one, add my thought to probably the most important, as it says, "Is a girl to bring attention, to afford a lifesaver tip for recreational voters, so they can have a safer and more fun experience on the water through the year." That's what we want to do, that's a lot of things, and all, we appreciate that, we want to afford the businesses and our chairman, Paul Thomas, want to present that. Oh, thank you, ma'am, appreciate your efforts. Jim, thanks, sir.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you're welcome.
Item, the next item where we moved up to the item 14 and 15 will be taken now. At this time, we levitate a motion to go into a public hearing.
How so, move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Clyde, Commissioner Clyde, second, come back, Commissioner.
Collins.
Collins, any discussion on the motion going to public hearing? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known as saying aye. This public hearing will take place with the solar farm ordinance, it's the second reading of it, and it will do with the tiny home ordinance, which is the second reading of it. Okay, the solar farm ordinance has been read at the meeting last month, it's been posted on the county website for the month, for comments and people to look at and to be notified that we will be at this meeting tonight, for anybody that wanted to come and speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the ordinance? I guess I could read it first, but we're suspending the reading, I think people, if everybody read that wants to talk, that knows what, is anybody here that wants to speak against us voting on this ordinance? Mr. Hargrove, if you would, come to the podium, pull that microphone down close to you, speak, I can hear you. State your name and your address, please, and you've really got five minutes, but we've haven't got a lot to do, so if you want to take six, we'll do it.
Good evening, my name's Trey Hargrove, 1751 Metisville Road. Sorry I missed the first meeting about this ordinance. The questions I have about it, and there's been a lot of, we've been contacted about solar farms on our property, and we're not really interested in it, it just goes against what we own property up here for. But in the ordinance, there's a couple of things that were mentioned, one being the buffers. I know they have to be, states have to be maintained year-round, there's going to be a fence inside these buffers, but are these buffers going to be evergreen? What is going to be the height for these buffers? I know some landowners around us are wanting to do solar, and if the property, one of the properties behind us, if they were to do it on one of their fields, if we're staying on our property, we can easily see their solar farm, which kind of defeats the purpose of a buffer. You know, if there were a solar farm on the property next to you, and your elevation was higher than what solar farm was, and the buffer was not tall enough, I don't think it's something that you would necessarily want to look at. That's one of my concerns. Also, as far as the future use of these buffers, or these solar farms, to the best of my knowledge, and I'm in the land business, the management business, these solar farms have not been around forever. Nobody really knows what the end use of these things is, and exactly where the funding is coming from. I know you've got in here a decommissioning bond to remove the solar panels, and I guess the infrastructure that's included, but what's going to happen to the land after all that's removed? Is the land, can you use it for farming? Can you use it for cattle? Can you plant trees on it? Or is this going to be some type of land that's going to basically have a negative, lower value, and if this land is adjacent to property that you own or I own, how is that going to affect our property values going forward? I know there's some talk that the county will benefit from the taxes, which is great. You know, there, I know Eric, I'm not in politics, I commend you all for what you do, but I know tax income is always important to every county or municipality, but is there, is there a better way that the county could generate tax revenue besides doing something that might not necessarily impact the people that are in here? I'm obviously the youngest one here, but, you know, down the road in 30 years, 40 years, I'm sorry, most of y'all probably won't be here, I might not even be here, but, you know, I don't want my children and our family to have property that's going to be surrounded by something that's going to have a negative impact on the property value, and I guess really the whole reason that, you know, that we own property in Lincoln County is for the, you know, the beauty of what's here. If Lake Thurman or Clark's Hill, you know, if they wanted to develop that thing all the way around it, there's some huge tax dollars that could come there, but there's a reason it's not. Go look at Lake Oak County, it's a disaster. You know, there's nothing but docks and houses. I'm all for generating tax, you know, income for the county, but I just feel like there's a hidden agenda on why these solar folks are picking certain areas, you know, and the money, it's crazy money that they're willing to pay. You know, it's hard to turn it down, I'll be honest. But it just seems like there's more to it. If they're willing to pay you the ridiculous amount of money per acre for a three-year option, and then another three-year option, and they don't even know if they can get approved for it, if they're willing to throw that kind of money out there, I think there's more, it seems like there's more to the agenda than what, than what people realize. And if these things were, I guess, really good for society, why are they not popping up everywhere else? Why are they picking certain areas? I know it has something to do with transmission lines, and we have a transmission line that borders part of our property, you know, and I can't stop somebody from what they do on their property. I mean, everybody owns land for different reasons, but I do feel like that for the good of the county and for the future of the county, this needs to be considered, you know, very seriously, because are we opening up a can of worms that, you know, could negatively impact the county? You know, just going down the road. There's also one other thing in the, in this ordinance about solar easements. It does mention that the easements have to be recorded. If there is someone next to us, or next to you, Mr. Norman, that wants to build a solar farm, but they need to come through your property to tie into a transmission line, and without coming across your property, they can't do it. Is there going to be any legal problems going forward with a neighbor that wants to do a solar farm but can't, but is 500 yards short of the transmission line, and through some sort of eminent domain, they have to allow them to come across their property to reach that transmission line? Like I said, I think it just all goes back to, I really feel like this is opening a can of worms that will likely negatively impact the county.
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to, are you through?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sir?
Sir, yes, sir, I am.
You through?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for sharing that with us. I'm going to, I'm going to try to answer a couple of those for you.
Okay.
Last month wasn't the first time we dealt with this, we've been dealing with it for about nine months that we've studied it. We had a six-month moratorium on it, then we extended, after six months, we extended it. All these commissioners have talked to various counties, Mr. Jackson Island County Attorney has talked to several other county attorneys. We have taken about three different counties. We incorporated some of all those counties in this ordinance. Is it going to be perfect? Have we answered every question? Is everything done? No, probably not.
Right.
But this is no different than a state law or federal law. If we find something in here that we have left out, that they got a loophole on, all we got to do is come back and amend the law. County ordinance is a county law that we can amend to do it. With the knowledge that we have gotten from various different people and professionals, I think we got as good of an ordinance to start out with if we could do it. Simply if we didn't do anything, then we wouldn't have an ordinance, and maybe you'd be in real trouble then, because you wouldn't govern anything. And there was somebody here today that's been going to Elbert County's meetings and listening to what they're doing. They had very little ordinances to begin with, with 400 acres at 79 and 72. New commissioners came in, they've made a lot of things very similar to ours, maybe a touch stricter than ours. Ours is as strict or stricter than any ones we've ever looked at.
That's good.
So I think we are at the position with this one to vote on this ordinance tonight, not leave it more, not leave it sitting out there for too long. You can always bring it back. It's not, it's not something that is perpetual. This can be changed at any time. It might take a solar farm to come in to find out we hadn't got something right. As far as what happens to the property at the end of the lease, 20-year, 30-year lease or whatever it is, somewhere in all this, it addresses that. And the property has to be cleaned back up, or you can call the barn in, you know, you've done the best you can do. The bonding company can go bankrupt, you might not have anything. But you've done the best you can do with what you got to do with. That property reverts back to A1, agriculture. That means you can back, go back to growing trees now. I can't tell you that, I don't know whether I've heard stories that it ruins the ground, you can't plant a tree back. Some people say that's not true, I don't know. But it has to go back to an A1. They are granted this if they do it. I can tell you now, this, I don't think they're going to do it because of this. But if they do, and at the end of it, it reverts back to A1, they are given a special use just for that solar farm to be on that property, nothing else. So if this is, say, 20 years, it goes out, and they want to take it out and do something else with it, they can't do it without coming back before the county then, for the county to approve whatever they want to do with it other than what's already in an A1 deal, which is mostly growing trees, agriculture.
Yes, sir.
That's 68% of Lincoln County, A1. On the part of the buffers, if I could hear you right, and if I understood your question from, I think we even talked about that, that was even, that was mentioned yesterday in our work session, and we met two hours and 20 minutes yesterday, and it wasn't all on this, but a lot of it was. The buffer you talking about? Let's just say on your property, you didn't do it, and the next man did, and it's back, way back up in the woods, just half a mile off the road. They've got to go around your property just like it would be if it was a residential property or a road property. Is that one 100 foot or 200 foot? But they got to be back at least 100 foot, it might be 200 foot.
200.
At 200 feet, they got to be passed behind your property in the back of your property, they have to be at least 200 feet. We also require an eight-foot chain link fence all the way around the property inside of that 200-foot buffer. So if you're going down the road, you're not even going to see the chain link fence, supposedly. Hopefully, we've got everything addressed. Probably there's a loophole in there somewhere, I don't know of one we've ever passed it, something, we'd have to come back and try to fix it, you know, some folks, everybody looks all the way to beat the system, so you have to go back and get it, but I think this is about as good as any we've seen and what we can do, and I can tell you, I'm not as familiar with the people where your property is, I don't think that's a big deal anyway, because of the 1,200 acres, they want them, two or three of them control most of that 1,200 acres, and I don't think any of those people people, I'm not calling any names, but I don't think any of those people are willing to sell at least that land to them anyway.
Right.
I think, I think if this is done tonight, I don't think it's the thousand nineteen acres in the north end that, that Silicon Ranch will even attempt to do. It just so happened in two thousand and three when the county zoning went in, more than half of that property is in A3. We don't allow an A3, we allow it at A1. So with the buffers that have to be done and, and not as much property as they want, it's gonna be cut by more than sixty percent. I don't think it's gonna be feasible for them to get the megawatts that they want to get on. They can't get the megawatts that they say they got to have to go on that, that problem that they told me that. You know, they are real concerned about it. One of their lobbyists text me before the meeting, a while ago. Just wanted to know if we were voting on it tonight. We'd say probably hope we don't, but, but I think we got a good ordinance. It's not something that was thrown in real quick with very little thought on it.
Yes, sir. I, I agree. I mean, it's very thorough. I've read through it a couple of times. It just, there was just a couple of things that, you know, that were of concern to me and, you know, really that would apply to anyone else in Lincoln County. You know, it's, it, it's a wonderful place, and you just, you hate to see something, see a can of worms get opened and all of a sudden, you know, you, you look back and you're like, wow, you know, why, why did we do that?
Well, we trying to protect, you know, my daddy used to say if it was, if it was easy, everybody would be doing it. You know, sometimes, sometimes we have easy beating, sometimes we don't have easy beating.
Sure.
You know, we have to, you know, you get a lot of opposition over zoning stuff.
I'm sure.
The most controversial thing probably we do now more so than setting the military. You know, you got, you got, you got people that want to sell their property and you got at least three people up here, if not all five of us, telling them what they can and can't do, whether they can sell it for five million dollars or not. That, that's a lot of responsibility. And you have to, you have to try to weigh this out the best you can do. Our job is, is to look down the road thirty or forty years and not at yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And try to do what we think, when we make this decision that we doing in the best interest of Lincoln County today and in the future. And I think that's what this is done. Without me, you know, if, if you just, if, if certain ways you can do things and they can sue you, you wind up in court a long ways too. So it's a lot that goes into this that everybody don't understand.
I understand, yes, sir.
Right off the bat, but I'm telling you that, and I think I'm speaking for all five of us. If I'm not, they can make a comment. But I think we, we, we got something here that's the very best that we can do at the time that we, that we got to do it, that's gonna protect the integrity of the county now and in the future. You know, I'm gonna go and say this, I'm gonna shut up because I could talk long and it couldn't cost a preacher. I told somebody just this morning, and I'm speaking of your area.
Yes, sir.
You know, personally, I don't think that's a good place for a solar farm, and I'm gonna tell you why. If we grow like we should grow, and I think we will grow, we forty years behind Columbia County. When I came and sit in this chair forty-four years ago, it wasn't thirty-two thousand people in Columbia County. It's a hundred and seventy thousand today. Where are they going? Look at the surrounding counties, and today they coming toward Lincoln County. This is where they headed.
You can see it in the morning.
So this piece of property, if they got a thirty-year lease on it, that's, I won't be here then. Not many of us in here probably will. But I'm looking at what can happen thirty or forty years from now. That piece of property down there is two miles outside the city limits of Lincoln. If Lincoln County really does grow like it has the potential of doing, do we want good growth with nice homes up there or do we want solar farms two miles outside the city limits of Lincoln? I mean, that's what, that's what you have to look at. I don't personally think that's a good place for it, you know, but, but you have to sometimes take your personal thoughts out of things and try to do what you can do. You're not gonna satisfy everyone. Somebody's not gonna like you. Okay, thank you. I hope we answered. If I did not, be in the office in the morning, come see me.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, sir.
As far as these different solar companies applying for permits, is that something that will also, is, is that posted on the county website or how, how do we know when a solar company will be, I guess, starting to set the wheels in motion for them, I guess, applying for permits and that type of thing?
They would, they would have to come to Director Ica's office. It would have to go through our planning and zoning process, which you would be notified and it would be other public hearings on that as to whether we gonna grant. If they come, they got to request a special use just for this solar farm. Signs would go up on the property, a notice would go in the Lincoln Journal or whatever we call it, the Tri-County paper. Then it would go before the process of the planning and zoning board to make a recommendation to the county commissioners whether you gonna grant them a special use to put a solar farm there. Then it comes over to us and we make the final decision. They make a recommendation. So then it's, it's got to come back and you can come back just like you did tonight and speak against us, give it, or for us, give it a special use for this to happen.
So basically, it's just on your, it will be on the agenda when?
Oh, yeah, yeah. All that would have to be done. It wouldn't be that they could go over there and put in for a solar farm, you drive up to your property one day and they out there put the pounds, it's a clear problem. That, that's not, that won't happen that way.
Okay.
But I do tell people, it's very important that they look at the newspaper and look at the county's website, because everything's on the county website. Lead the horse to the water, but you can't make a drink, but it's on that. And it's not our fault if somebody don't see it, you know, we can't.
Yes, sir.
But, but I think, I think between Gary Ward and two or three other people, you'll know if something's going on.
Okay.
He'll fly, he'll fly a helicopter over and keep an eye on it for you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. We took a long time with this. I don't want anybody not to have a chance to say something. Anybody else want to speak for it? Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak against? Okay. All right, here's where we are. We are gonna lay the, well, Mr. Jackson, if you would, start the reading, your second reading of the ordinance.
I'll do it, Mr. Chairman.
I ain't gonna let you read long.
This, this will be known as part of the Code of Ordinance, says as chapter thirty-four, section five ninety-nine. Definition: Following words, terms, and phrases when used in this chapter shall not have the following meanings ascribed to them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. One. Solar energy system, SES, means a device or structural design feature that provides for the collection of solar energy for electricity generation, consumption, or transmission, or for thermal applications.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
It's been on the website for at least thirty days. We talked about it, and it's been advertised. I think, looking at the audience, if not any objection, I'd like to ask for the suspending of the reading. I hear no objection. We're gonna suspend the reading of the second reading of these solar farm ordinance, and it will continue to be on the website for a period of time. Okay, that's gonna conclude our public hearing part of the solar farm ordinance. Now I'm going to tiny homes. Is there, we have a reading of tiny homes? If you would, Mr. Jackson, go ahead and start the reading of the tiny homes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Would you like for me to read the resolution or the actual ordinance?
I think you start on the ordinance.
Yes, sir. This shall be known as chapter thirty-four, article five ninety-eight, tiny houses. Purpose: An ordinance of Lincoln County, Georgia, providing definitions relating to tiny houses and standards to guide the installation of tiny houses to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I'm looking at the audience that's been on there. I don't think that's anybody here with that, but I am gonna have a public hearing on it. But if, without objection, is there objection to suspending the reading of the tiny home? There's no objection, then we'll go into, we in our public hearing on tiny homes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the ordinance on the second reading? If we will vote on in just a few minutes on tiny houses, I'm sorry, it's tiny houses, not tiny homes. Anyone that wants to speak against? Don't see, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of tiny homes? I don't see anyone here. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now, a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion to come out of two public hearings? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. We're out of our public hearing. We're going back to item four, which is the solar farm ordinance. I'm asking for a motion to adopt the amended chapter of, of our Land Use Code, chapter thirty-four, to add section five ninety-nine for the comprehensive guidelines for the safe and orderly development of solar energy farms in Lincoln County after the second reading. Is there a motion that we adopt the ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I'm.
Commissioner Collins.
I have a comment or two tonight. I have spent more time working on this ordinance than the ordinance that we have in the books. And I just want, a comment or two I'd like to make, and first to address Mr. Harwood. Yes, there's got to be a hidden agenda. The money floating around for this is just, you can't explain it. You cannot explain the money that's floating around the world for solar farms. But I know I've been told that the federal government is pushing this. I guess the same as they're pushing EVs. I think some will say this ordinance does too much, some might say too little. And there's a couple of people I know in this county who don't think we ought to have an ordinance at all for anything, for anything. But what we're gonna, what I want to try to do with this ordinance is protect those that don't want solar farms and try to protect those that do want a solar farm. I think the worst thing that we could do would be nothing. If there is no ordinance, the county has no control over what goes in this county. You know, we may look back in thirty years, not counting on being here, Mr. Chairman, and see if we've made a mistake or not. Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Any other commissioner got anything to say? If not, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and the motion has carried. All right, now we are at the tiny homes, tiny houses. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance for the development of tiny houses and, and for providing regulations for tiny houses after this, the second reading. Is there a motion that we adopt the ordinance number thirty-four dash five ninety-eight that deals with tiny homes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And the adoption of this goes with it. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and the motion has passed. All right, we're going back up to item number eight. Let's straighten back out. Item number eight is the Central Savannah River Area Regional Commission Technical Services Contract Director, Broom.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this was discussed in the work session. It's a twenty-one thousand dollar grant to, with the CSRARC, to assist us in the writing of our pre-disaster hazard mitigation grant. It's a five-year cycle document, and this is a budget-neutral grant in that in-kind services will pay any part belonging to the county, which is about thirteen hundred and forty dollars. I'm asking for Collins to give the chairman permission to sign the contract with it, CSRARC.
Okay, we talked about this at Lincoln yesterday. Is there a motion to approve the contract with the CSRARC? I think this is a five-year process, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That we are really required to do. We don't have any choice but do this. Federal government makes us do it on our pre-hazardous, pre-disaster mitigation plan for Lincoln County. Is there a motion that we approve the contract?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number nine is fireworks tax grant award, Director Broom.
Chairman, this board authorized me to write a grant for funds from the GFSTC, the Georgia Fire Standards and Training Council. We received that grant, an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. It did have a ten percent match, which is, of course, twenty-five hundred dollars, and we meet that with the project that it was directed towards, which was the refurbishment of engine eleven, to get it in shape to go out to station eleven, to assist the folks from the south end of the county. We're, I'm asking that you accept twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from this grant for that purpose.
Okay, you heard the recommendation. This has been discussed at the work session. We are asking for a motion to accept the grant of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And this will go with getting engine number eleven, but the motion is to accept the grant, twenty-two five, is our motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is, Commissioner Tankersley?
Oh, no, I just have it.
Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. You scratching your head, you caught me up. All in my. Item number ten is the Midway Volunteer Fire Department Request for Air Packs, Director Broom.
Mr. Chairman, the, the Fire Services Advisory Committee in a call meeting put forth a recommendation that the commission considered the purchase of up to ten self-tainted breathing apparatus to be used by Midway Fire Department as well as potentially others. They did ask for an emergency action to assist Midway Fire Department in becoming compliant with the, with the addition of this equipment. Chairman, you authorized an emergency purchase of those four SCBA's at a cost of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Those have been ordered. They are on the way for delivery approximately six to eight weeks from now.
Okay, we purchased four air packs for Midway Fire Department. They have county air packs, but they are, would be assigned to Midway Fire Department. As he stated, they were bought under emergency plan. Now the commission needs to approve the thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. This will be paid out of ERP, American Rescue Plan monies, is their motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion's carried. Item twelve is taken off the agenda at this time. That was more for discussion yesterday. Item number twelve is, um, sun shade jumping pillow. This is a recreation project I got Director Doss on here because Director Glaze was out of town attending a park, Georgia Park Recreation Bill. I guess Director Glaze, you'll yield this to Director Doss. Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed yesterday, um, we had got several quotes for a sun shade over the, uh, jumping pillow. And at yesterday's meeting, and the original price was thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars. At yesterday's meeting, we wanted to extend the length by twenty dollars. Uh, Mr. Heightman is still trying.
Twenty feet?
Twenty feet, thank you. Mr. Heightman is still trying to get final quotes on that. And so, uh, Chairman, uh, we're asking for the approval of up to forty thousand dollars to be paid for out of ARP, uh, for this, uh, forty-by-eighty-foot, uh, fourteen-foot-tall shed building, uh, cover to be pushed over the, uh, jumping pad.
Okay, this is, um, with the addition, it went up since yesterday. We better go ahead and vote on it for tomorrow. The request is for a motion of up to, up to forty thousand. Don't think it's gonna cost that much, but we did extend it as he said. We think, pretty sure, that we all agreed that we would accept a grant from the developer authority, probably ten thousand dollars to go along with this. So, anything forty thousand dollars or under, we probably looking at thirty or under. And this, the balance of this will not be paid with general fund, but paid for with American Rescue Plan of ARP funds. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation up to forty thousand?
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde.
I was just gonna say, the reason we doing this, 'cause the, um, pillow got so hot that the kids were burning their feet, you know, in the hot summer, so we doing this to.
And the momma's wanting to shave tree too, didn't she?
Right, to be able to watch the children.
Any other discussion?
We was gonna plant a couple of oak trees, but that is gonna take too long on the grating.
Larry'd probably be here to see it.
I'm too.
He planted them.
I don't know where y'all going, but I'm staying here.
All of, any other commissioners, any thing? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Item number thirteen is catastrophic inmate health insurance.
Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed at yesterday's meeting, we currently have a, a catastrophic inmate health coverage. It says a ten thousand dollar deductible, and it is for major medical. The, the quote this year is three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty-two dollars more than last year. It's fifty-one hundred dollars, and it, uh, we're asking for your approval to make it a budgeted item and, uh, authorize the chairman to, uh, to, uh, execute the, uh, binder.
Was this, this was brought to us by the sheriff, is that correct?
Yeah, the sheriff has, the sheriff requested it last year, and he's requesting us to continue it. Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the fifty-one hundred dollars for catastrophic inmate health insurance? As presented to you, this is a budgeted item and will be paid for through the budget of the general fund. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion is our second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion's carried. Thirteen and fourteen, uh, fourteen and fifteen has been done. Sixteen, Director Iker, if you would come to the podium. Pull the microphone down. You don't have to push it up.
Chairman and Commissioners, the Public Works Utility Department is requesting an approval for a new policy on residential and commercial sewer tap fees. The new policy would be across the board, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, and the developer and owner would be then responsible for installing, connecting to the sewer tap, sewer system.
Okay, we discussed this yesterday. I think we all know what we doing. Is there a motion that we adopt a new policy on sewer tap fees?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion's carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion, is our second? Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion's carried, and we stand adjourned.